Our final piloting meeting for those teachers who went through the vetting process is coming up next week, Monday. So we should have a recommendation coming soon. We've been keeping the Curriculum and Standards Committee up to date on that process since it began back in January, February. The last item that is not also listed as a different discussion item on our board agenda is an update on just a little bit of what Kevin was talking about. Just reflections, changes, structure of the curriculum committee for next year. We spent the April meeting talking about challenges, celebrations, structures, and item agendas that we've covered. And in May, we put together, took that list of celebrations, challenges, things we want to learn more about, and put them into actionable steps, which are also linked in, and Dr. Schultz is pulling up now. So those were the five actionable steps that the team came up with in May in terms of changes, information slash actions for next year. And those are shared with you in your board package. And that really completes, other than another item, we can move into distinguished alumni, but it is listed as a different discussion item on the agenda. So, you know, it was a great year, and thanks to our board representation for your feedback this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will go on to item. Listen if any other questions for Julie? We're gonna move on to the building committee report.
Yes, we met tonight.
We were so...
Sorry, Julie only did A, so we're actually on 9B.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yes.
Julie, keep going there.
Yes, I'll keep going. I just, they're listed as separate agenda items, so I just wanted to bring them together. All right. Last month at our last board meeting, Zach and his team, his Physical Education team presented some information about the tools, the equipment, the strategies that Physical Education has been morphing into. And there were a couple of follow-up questions, so we just wanted to answer those questions the best we could. We had a team of individuals, and I believe Zach and Kurt are here, and Nell's here, and Greg Milkie. Come on up if you want to.
Here's, uh, presented by Greg Milkie, Kurt from high school, Danielle, Zach Seaver, Julie, Shell, so... Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Greg, Greg, Nell, and Kurt up here.
Yeah, come on up, guys.
Come on, you're open. Yeah, they were instrumental in helping us answer these questions, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you for being here.
Yeah, so.
Start with the questions.
Sure. So, just speaking to the specific questions that were brought up regarding physical education. One was what drove the change? Was the curriculum committee part of the process? Total costs, were grants used? What's happening with field equipment? How does this impact the budget? And how does this impact community and sports programs?
And I can speak too in terms of the curriculum facets of the questions. What drove the change is really the evolution of best practice in teaching physical education. We looked at over time, just like when you think about brain research and teaching children how to read, the same kinds of things evolved through all content areas. And therefore, the change was really driven by best practices in the movement in physical education to use a variety of different tools, methods, strategies that align with our standards. And over time, the Wisconsin model academic, model academic standards ebb and flow. And as a curriculum committee, it is our responsibility to ensure that all of our content areas, all of our curriculum is aligned with the standards. So, the standards are always kind of our standing foundation. And the tools, the strategies, and the best practices we use to be aligned and to help students develop proficiencies and masteries of those standards are really what drove this change in the use of the space.
Okay, so just revisiting the current curriculum. The link shows more in depth of the differentiation, the intentionality, and the specific progressions for working and educating each student. And like, to reiterate what Julie said, as standards have evolved, it's just kind of better understanding of applying data to the evolving needs of students, of programming, and essentially of culture, so.
And I can, I could speak to this too, is one of the big things that the FIAD standards are looking for is movement of children because of the lack of movement that has been occurring recently with the technology development and things like that. My big SLO this year was to go in and research different movement strategies, and I used the functional movement screen where I got certified. And through the first semester, one of the big daunting, I guess, results were is that, as you can see in the movement there, that's kids doing a squat. And it's something that needs to be adjusted and worked upon. Otherwise, it's gonna have huge potential injury down the road. So, one of the big things is focusing on movement. And that's when I, when proposed to, you know, Zach and the FIAD department is I brought these results and said, "We have, we have a huge mobility issue." And our big drive was to go and talk about, okay, how do we make kids more mobile and efficient in the movement? So, that's kind of how the discussion came about, is talking about space and allowing kids to move to correct movements. In order to do that, you need space. And the discussion that came up was some of the machines in there are putting people in a fixed position and only isolating one movement where if we can increase space, we can allow all different types of movement to occur.
I think to reiterate too what Kurt said was, if you look at, it might be subtle, but the young men with the bar above their heads, you can see tinnitus in the shoulder, the one young man's on his tiptoes, and all those things are precursors for injury. So, if those aren't dealt with or those aren't understood and corrected, then you're gonna find more of those severe traumatic injuries for the athlete or for the student. Old equipment, don't know how much Nell wants to share on this, but 2003 Pep Grant was awarded the school district $430,000 for essentially nearly all the equipment in that room, aside from maybe the racks and a few other things.
You two wrote that?
So that was, that was written and initiated by Nell and collaborated with Greg on that. So, from my understanding, from the district perspective, there was no cost incurred by them for any of the, really any of the... $40,000, okay. Of the, of most of the machines you see in the quote, I should say, so I don't want to speak universally. But you can see the context for it. Right now, the equipment is 15 years old and beyond. So just as we learn more with time, we learn more with research, and our society evolves with new changes and needs, so has some of the tools that we need to best educate and progress our students. Old equipment, so our, a few years ago, when we phased out some of our previous equipment, our process has been to post that equipment for sale publicly through our business manager. And the equipment determined by the Physical Education team, as your tools essentially not deemed as best, as aligned with best practices, would be as shown on the list. So, as you can see, a few of the cardio components would be moved out, but essentially new cardio components would be brought in, and some of the existing would remain, along with some of the equipment that's already in there. Costs, so there's a few tiers to the cost. Essentially, the big, the big component would be the rig. It's a, it's a dynamic versatile training rig where you could have, you can have rope climbs, you can have Olympic stations, you can have countless different attachments to that, which allows for a full class to work around that one rig and station. So, it's a great piece, it's very versatile, it's very space efficient, and it serves a lot of different purposes. We also have the turf component, which, I don't know, Kurt, you want to maybe reiterate why the turf is a valuable component to that space?
I think going back to the movement concept, being able to get students to move through resistance rather than just in a fixed rate, because I think a lot of it is the core stability, which we hear with obesity, and that's usually relates to core stability and balance. And when you talk about movements and injuries, one of the big components is the lack of core stability, which is balance. And if you lose your balance, usually injuries will result from that. So being able to get them into an area where they're able to move and then able to move well with different types of equipments and things in their hands, because not only will that help for sports performance, but lifelong activity. If you're carrying groceries, anything like that, just the whole movement concept, I think, is something that's ever needed for everyday living.
Can I speak on the cost? The equipment that is currently in there that was from the Pep Grant 2003, it's 15 years old. And it needs updating. If we are going to replace it with that same type of equipment, it's gonna cost way more than what we're proposing here. And we still can get a little bit of money for it right now, if we do this move now. And that money is gonna support the new initiative. So, cost effective, this is gonna be a lot more cost effective, less maintenance, less upkeep for the future, and just better for the kids for movement.
And I think just simply on the repair cost too and maintenance, if a band breaks, you're talking $10 to replace it. Where, you know, if a pin or a cable or a bearing goes out in the machine, you're talking about hiring a crew to come in to oversee it, look at it, make sure there's no liability with it. So it's, it's minimal when you're looking at effective.
So this would be a kind of a concept of the sample rig, which just shows a few different options for what the versatility of that rig would look like. Essentially, the goal would be for that to be in one part of the room, and essentially could, could serve a class or even after school, a team, which, which would be extremely efficient and effective for meeting the standards. The concept of the training turf is also very versatile. You can see you have sleds, you have ropes, you have modified tires. So there's a lot of different functional training that translates into just strength in everyday movement, whether it be strength in work, career, or athletics, whatever it may be. The community education component, I think, you know, this is something too that, that Nell has really accelerated is just explode, the explosion of the, of the yoga culture in, in Mozzie and this area, which has been phenomenal. And you can see a photo there with the room that, that used to be our old weight room. So if you have a class in there and it's congested with students doing yoga with no equipment in there, imagine trying to have one class in there, or in the past, a few years ago, flashback, multiple teams in there with a bunch of weightlifting equipment in that room. You can see that there's, there are probably some points of concern for that space. Looking at expanding our community, community education opportunities with the open concept shift towards the FIAD classroom or the fitness center, you have a lot more versatility in bringing in community education classes for different things, whether it be, you know, TRX, kettlebell training, yoga, flexibility, you know, could be cardio kickboxing, whatever it may be.
We talked about like a spin class.
Spin class.
Spin bikes, like if we replace some of the, those bulky bikes and replace them with spin bikes, you can do a spin class on the turf. A lot of variety.
And then this was just kind of a, a short video that summarized, that's kind of a visual aid of what, of where we're at.
Open space, lots of open space for athletes, your functional movements, jumping, box jumps, all kinds of stuff.
What's your dream fitness center look like?
I think I would have a fitness center focused more on athletics and movement, more unconventional lifts, just because, especially in sports like football, that kind of thing, you're not dealing with an even load all the time. I think we should be, I mean, that stuff's great, but I think we should also have like a turf area where we can have sleds.
What does your dream weight room look like, Coach Jensen?
Well, as a coach of three sports, my dream weight room would be a weight room that all athletes could use to best, to better their athletic ability. State-of-the-art equipment, also probably turf, we can have like a 20-yard or so of turf in there would be awesome.
What would your dream weight room look like?
A lot of new equipment and a bunch of big things, so try different things, order new things.
Fitness center, a lot of quick weights, a lot of hard outs, weights. Space, push sleds, tires.
Mr. Boyd, how can we better utilize this facility for the students in primary class?
For our physical education classes, we still have this facility here. The machines are really crammed in together, and it's hard to do the activities that we want to do without classes. We can have multiple classes in here, so just need more space in this room.
Thank you.
Bring some justice to that one though.
So, I guess I want to say thank you to all of the FIAD teachers, because what we've listened to is the FIAD teachers wanting to change the space. I didn't come and say, "Nell, let's change your space," right? It's really been a ground up from all of the FIAD teachers and how can, how can you better teach the standards? And how can you better meet the needs of the kids? So, I appreciate all of the work that you have done and the fact that you brought this forward to us. And cost effective, you might have made a new best friend with Brent there. So does the board have any questions on the, what the physical education is doing and what they're doing with their classroom space?
As far as you sign out, are you gonna start selling the equipment now to start getting the money? Or are you gonna wait till you get some of those made with a grant? So how is that?
So, that's one of our problems is, you know, is money. So what we are gonna do is we were going to change the floor. So, one of the big things is getting that rig into the, into that fitness center. And what we need to do is it would need to be anchored, and that is an asbestos floor, a floor that's cracking. So we were gonna put that floor as part of our next summer construction budget, which our next, our next year's budget begins in July. So we are gonna come forward with bringing, abating that floor and getting that floor ready so that we could anchor that rig. We do have brick in the materials adoptions available right now in our budget to be able to buy the materials. We just need construction, district construction plans to get the floor done so we can put our equipment in the room. So the floor is the, the $30,000 floor is, it's the abatement of the asbestos, it's a 1922 building. So, we need that as part of our summer construction. Sat down with Steve and Brent, and we believe that with the $14.2 million in energy efficiency, that that could be part of our summer construction budget, that we, our budget would handle that. Agreed, Brent, Steve?
Right, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, so we've talked about that quite a bit, how do we get that floor abated? So we have the curriculum money right now, and we could purchase the, the equipment through our curriculum adoption budget, but we need the floor done. So that would be starting this coming July, we would need the budget to be approved for the floor. If we wanted this in by next school year, we would have to make sure that we get that money approved for the flooring, and then we have to line up the construction people to do it. Now, one of the things about this summer is we've already moved that whole class out. So nobody is in that facility this summer. That's kind of the beauty of this summer, is generally, we have several hundred kids in that facility during the summer, taking summer school. Paul, you've run that class, a couple hundred kids?
Sometimes we average 109 a day.
Yeah, in that space.
Yes.
Now this summer, we have, we don't, we're not using that space. So it technically would have been a great summer to get that space done, because we moved everything to the rec center. The problem is, even though our budget starts July 1st for next school year, we still have to bring that, we have to bring that forward to the finance committee approval for that, and we have not done that yet.
And looking at the numbers for summer school, I'm in charge of the weight room, and we're up to 136 kids signed up for summer weightlifting. And thanks to all the other teachers helping out, we were able to meet the needs of all the students, where we did have to cut anybody from the program or cap its sessions, because now we have three sessions with speed, yoga, and strength training. So now we can put them up into groups so that they're gonna get three different variations of training in their session.
So that's 136 kids that we're servicing this summer, that's pretty awesome, very awesome. So again, like I could buy the rig tomorrow because I have those dollars. I can't secure it to the floor until we approve the floor to be abated.
What does this mean now, like for the community and the fitness center? Will it still be open? Are we gonna call it back on or?
No, I can definitely see us offering different classes.
And I even offered myself to offer community education to happen and just teach how to use the equipment for different age ranges and movements and, and then I, like I said, offering it up. I'm sure there's community members that have Zumba backgrounds or anything that would like to utilize that space as well.
It's actually gonna increase the amount of things that we could offer, because it's just gonna be a more versatile space. There'll be open space for, you know, Zumba or TRX or spinning, which we don't have that space now. It's just, it's just too confined and too full of this bulky equipment, so.
So what I'm hearing is we'd still have like a fitness center?
Oh, definitely.
For sure.
But you won't have a fitness center, it looks like, well, no.
Right.
So you're gonna have people that are gonna be upset because they can't sit on a machine and do the same or put it in motion. Just so you know.
And that's the other thing too, is if you look at, we'd be more than happy, you have the outline, is not all the pieces of equipment are gonna be removed, there's still cable machines in there to utilize.
Right, and there'll still be cardio there. And some of the cardio that is in dire need of being replaced, we would replace it with something that's more updated, and again, more cost effective and slimmer, like the spinning bikes, they take up less space, and again, they're more functional. So the cardio, there will still be in there, yeah. It's really the machines that just aren't being used very much.
How many pieces of equipment are you getting rid of? So that didn't seem like very much though. I mean, we're talking, the way you're talking, you're opening up a great big space and...
It's basically, a lot of this is just, just reorganizing equipment.
They, they take a lot of room.
Yeah, so the, the, when you look at that list, I mean, we might be, I don't know, it's, you're probably over 20 by the time you count all of the, all the things that would be pulled out of there. So, those machines are, are pretty bulky as you can see, so students are doing their warmups around those machines. You start to remove even 10 of those, and you see how half the room opens up. And that's, that's the beauty of the, of the concept, is it's very efficient with our space, but it's also fits best practices as well. So it's kind of double win.
So all that Life Fitness, each one of those represents one machine, is that?
Yep, that one person can utilize at a time.
Yep, one person at a time, in a fixed, in a fixed position, which... And I think too, just to, just to reiterate with our, with our FIAD staff, I mean, having athletics, having a FIAD background, I've seen a lot of different classrooms, I've seen FIAD carried out on different ways. I think there's often this theme of, you know, okay, it's a three-month dodgeball unit or some, something to that nature. But, you know, looking at Kurt, looking at Nell, looking at Greg, I mean, they're, they're exceptionally, we are, we are very blessed to have them here. And I think what's great and so impressive about them is they're not just looking at what the best people are doing, they're innovating what the best people are doing in a lot of ways. So, so they're really on the cutting edge of a lot of this, and they have that. And I think that's what's amazing about Nell with kind of what she's driven with yoga, Kurt with the strength and speed and fitness, Greg with his progression at the elementary, so just a lot of positive connections with the students. And that's why I think you see the, the big volume from students for these courses.
I guess my one question in the 1922 section with the floor, are we sure that if we take that out, this will be able to withstand the weight and?
I would, I would assume so. Most of our floors are four, four or five inches thick of concrete, but that is an asbestos floor and mastic over that, so that will have to be abated and stripped out.
That's the expenses, right?
Yeah, and we have, you know, and also moving equipment, so they can't just take the floor without the equipment in the way either. So that's an issue we are discussing as well.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thanks for your information, very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
So you'll see it coming back, will be bringing a proposal back to get the floor done. That's, that's our next step, and you'll be seeing that coming forward to the board. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One more.
One more.
No yawning, be kind.
Last but not least, the alumni recognition. Now, Mr. Tiger brought this forward to us in this, this summer, right, when I was coming on board. And we've done some research, looked at other districts, and basically, what you have in front of you is just kind of a draft of a combination slash best effort at a nomination form, looking at other districts that utilize a distinguished alumni award for their district coming out of the high school. Also some draft bylaws based on, again, some best practices, and just talking with principals and committee chair, individuals of what's worked well, and kind of some tips to, tips of the trade when you're doing this alumni award. And then again, just a draft of our website communication, because most of the time, people don't know about a distinguished alumni award unless it's advertised on their website and through Facebook and some of the social media options that are out there. So we, we put together just kind of our best draft of what it could potentially look like. Mr. Lehman put his eyes on it, because it does include kind of nominations to occur, you know, October 1st, and then, you know, through a process by November 5th, you know, a notification to the nominee, an acceptance by January, and then some kind of award, awarding of ceremony to award the person, potentially as part of a graduation ceremony or of that nature at the end of the year. So, again, just some first reads between Mike and I of what we thought, you know, looked like. It could potentially be something that, you know, as a board, we could take a look at, as a high school, we could take a look at, and just for your discussion.
Does it, any other questions for Julie on that?
So is this something the board's gonna approve or disapprove of?
I think we approved it already.
Yeah, so well, it's just a discussion, a lot of information right now, we want you to take a look at that. If you see changes that you would like to give back to Julie, Julie will then send an email out or maybe give an update at the July board meeting and say, "So far, what have you thought? Let's make a final approval." It's a, it's a lot of pieces of information. We're sitting in May right now, would like to have you take a look at that and get a final approval for her, probably by the end of the summer.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, now we are on to the building committee report.
Yes, we met tonight, and we had the board agenda in minutes ahead of what we're staying from. But then we go on to new business, and I'm gonna turn that over to Steve. Steve can kind of go over what we went over and make it shorter and sweeter than I can, I'm sure.
Sure, no problem, thank you. Just a few updates regarding what's happening in this district and through our facilities. Currently, we're working on energy efficiency projects, Nexus is on site. We have started the work, if you've been to the facility, you'll see a lot of the ceilings are removed in areas. So, we have crews working from 4:00 PM to 2:00 in the morning, Monday through Thursday. That work will continue until school starts, I mean, school ends I should say. And our contract will go from a 3 o'clock, or 7 to 3:30, and we may run double shifts for a while, depends upon how the work comes out. So, there's a lot of work happening throughout the middle school and high school. We had a large asbestos abatement over spring break, that was taken out. So we need to clean those areas out so they can do the work that they're doing now. Our goal is to get things prepped and in place, so currently, we actually are installing some piping that'll be put in service at the end of the summer as well. This ties into our... This ties into our science wing. We had a groundbreaking ceremony tonight, which was wonderful. And that being said, a lot of things that are going to feed that new science wing are happening through the same hall we were taking these ones out. We have to get the mains power, electrical, chill water, hot water to feed the new science wing. So, that's happening as we speak. So, we're trying to kill two birds with one stone as it were. We have a very tight timeline, trying to meet to the summer. So, that's happening. The other option we have is some of the current work through ongoing facilities. We are reworking our high school gym right now. So, that's, the floor's been removed last week, and we are installing electrical and data underneath the floor. This, this week, and painting. That project will continue till about mid-July. That will be done at that point in time. And tomorrow at seven o'clock, we're going to have an MCA meeting on our site, and we're going to discuss some items out there for future work. That's pretty much a short and sweet of it.
And I will just add that Steve said why this project is going. If any of the board members would like to stop in and kind of do it.
Yep.
Just please let him know, and he will take you through.
Yeah, because once we're in a construction area that's high vis, I need to have hard hats, safety glasses, high visibility, so injuries. And once school ends, the site will be a total construction site except for the pool. So, if you do want to come through, just let me know. I'm more happy to walk you through our nexus and give you a snapshot of it. I'll continue taking pictures and a lot of pictures. You'll see them as, as this progresses. But yes, just please.
Did you do a video on the?
Yep, just uploaded a video this week. So, we'll continue to do that as well, keep everybody informed as how we move forward. But so far, the contracts we have on board and very good to work with. Everybody's been very understanding, so, so far, we're in pretty good.
And then that, that is all the building committee has, okay?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
My question is, is with the concession stand, is one, in the beginning, you said Ted Steffen was remodeling it. Are we remodeling? Because then as you go on and go through the paragraph, you say new concession stand. Are we remodeling or rebuilding the new one?
We're actually going to be adding on to that. So, the kitchen area is going to be expanded about ten feet worth. It's very tight in the, the chemistry, the way it sits. And then, we're actually going to be continuing a roof line over the top of that where the concrete is, if you walk onto that site. So, that will be a cover like pavilion all the way over the top of that. So, and that money was donated from Mrs. Kreske to fund that project. So, that'll be happening after school's out.
That was, that's the student side group that?
Yep, they were, we're writing that in.
Yep.
Who will be recognizing the Kreske family for their donation at the completion of that project?
Yes. Did anybody answer the end of question? If not, we will move on to the personnel committee report, which is Kevin.
Okay. We met at six thirty, and we took a look at the agenda. We did a small shuffle in the new business and put agenda item A.